It's money girl season and Premier Credit is ready to throw you some cash. Any loan, any reason, and fast. For more information, call 225-667-8100, or apply online at premiercredit.com. Premier Credit, a proud sponsor of Local Leaders the Podcast. All right, Ms. Amber Dugoss, how are you?
Doing good.
So let me first say, welcome to Local Leaders the Podcast. We're going to cover a bunch today. We're going to talk to you in regards to your business, Tola Cafe, Taste of Louisiana, for those of you that aren't good with acronyms.
Right.
In addition to that, we're going to talk about your work on the Denham Springs City Council a little bit. But first, I want to get into your personal business a little bit.
Yeah, let's just get that out of the way.
So tell us where you were raised, where you attended high school, and a little about your family.
Um, well, I was raised, I mean, lived in Louisiana my whole life, with the exception of a couple of years in the eighties when there was the oil bust, which hopefully we're not going to go back through. My parents, my dad worked in the oil industry. He was, I worked on the rigs. So when everything went bust, my parents lost everything and we were forced to pick up and literally just move with like a truck. I mean, it was, it was a minivan and moved to Tennessee because my granddad worked construction and lived there and had a business. We were very lucky in that sense that my parents could just pick up and go and move there, me and my younger brother. So with the exception of that, I've lived in Louisiana my whole life, Walker, Denham Springs. I went to school in Denham High School in Walker and moved back to Denham after high school. And so I've, Denham's pretty much been the epicenter in my life.
That's right. Yeah. LP.
Yeah, it's there.
You know, it's interesting. There's a lot of people in Louisiana, especially in this area, that kind of have ties to Tennessee somehow.
Yeah.
And I guess it's just far enough away that you feel like you're away, but it's close enough that you can always come back.
That's true. You can get back in like a day. It's a long drive, but you can get back in a day.
That's right. What, uh, was it East Tennessee or West Tennessee?
Nashville.
Nashville, okay.
Because it was when Nashville was building, was booming and the building was going up. They were building apartments, all kinds. So, I mean, real estate at that time was huge there. And I mean, it could still be now. I'm just not familiar with it. But that's immediately, my dad had a job and we could move and they could pick up and keep going.
You're married to your high school sweetheart?
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome. Awesome. Know him pretty well.
Yeah, he's Baton Rouge. So it took me a minute to get him out here. But once you do, you don't ever...
My wife can relate to that as well.
Yeah. He said, I can't believe it took this long. I should have moved out. Like, what was I thinking? And I said, it's a different world. It's a different, it's just so much, you know, community is so much different in Denham and Livingston Parish as a whole. It's just so much more inviting. So you grow up in Baton Rouge and it's just a little bit more segmented. And you move out here and everybody's loving everybody. So it's, you know, it's nice.
Agreed. A hundred percent. I mean, I grew up right there off Millerville Road, which is not too far from here. I mean, I was real close to the Amity River, but never came out here until I met my wife. And then the rest is history. You also have some fur babies.
Yeah, I've got, we have a Doberman. She's eighty pounds. And then we have the other in the spectrum, which is a three pound Chihuahua, who we just inherited. Two years ago, my grandfather passed. It was his dog. And that's what, you know, he said, oh, take my dog. And I said, okay, you're a puppy. And she's, she's three pounds. And so we're, it's totally different. I've never had a small dog. I've always had big dogs. I've always had like seventy pound dogs. So it's, it's been a change. But we love her, but it's, it's just craziness.
Well, you run a gamut on them. You have a cat as well?
Yeah, we have a twenty pound Persian. He's just, he just goes with the flow. He's like, I don't know what's happening here. I've got this huge dog. He keeps wanting a baby, the Chihuahua, and she's eight years old. She doesn't want any of that. So he's like, oh, she's a baby. No.
Yeah, it's, it's funny because you run the gamut on those, on those fur babies where you've got a giant one, a little bitty one, and then a cat. Do they all get along?
They, yeah, they do. They do. But it's strange because the Chihuahua, I've never been a Chihuahua person. Like, I was always like, I don't want a young baby dog.
Taco Bell.
Yeah, I don't want any of that. And he, she doesn't bark. Like, she's the only Chihuahua I've ever been around that doesn't bark. So, which is even stranger because she makes no noise. So then whenever you're paranoid, you're going to step on her. You know, you're like walking around, don't step on her. Don't sit on her. Don't. And, but they all get along. They're all really good. But we're lucky. They're all a little bit older, too. They're all eight, nine, ten.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Now, you get a little bit of free time. And when you get it, you like to do crafts, various crafts and things like that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I do that and run for office. That was my other free time. When you ask that question, I was like, oh.
Extra hour in the day here somewhere.
What do I do in my extra time? It's like, I do like craft stuff. I am one of those people that bought that little cricket cutting machine. So I'm like, let me stack, putting stickers on everything and vinyl stuff on everything. So that's been fun. But...
Scrapbooking?
Yeah, like into all, a little, a little, but not as much because I'm, I don't have time to print stuff.
Right.
I'm like, you know, scrapbooking, you gotta have pictures printed out and ready, you gotta kind of plan ahead. My stuff is like, whatever is around at that moment, can I glue it to something? And add a little glitter. Where's that ribbon? I'm good, you know?
Well, you know, it's a funny thing with business owners. You don't have a lot of free time. And people ask me all the time. They're like, so what did you do this weekend? And I'm like, oh, yeah, worked. And they're like, what did you do this night? Worked. You know?
Scrubbed the floor.
Yeah. You almost feel bad about yourself. They're all like, oh, all you do is work. And I'm like, okay.
Yeah, I love it when they're like, oh, I'm so sorry. And it's like, well, I didn't say it to you to make you feel bad. That's what I, that's what I had to get done.
Yeah, it's just kind of life.
Yeah, it is. It is.
So after high school and during college, I found it interesting that you worked at several restaurants, which I would assume kind of sparked your love for the restaurant industry. And at some point, it was your mother, I believe, who was thrown around the idea of opening a restaurant. So what I want you to do is take me kind of through that decision and how it led to opening Tola Cafe.
Well, we, my mom had worked, she, she was working at restaurants also, managing, kind of doing all the backend work. And she, with that, it, you know, she got to see a lot of that part, the business end and ordering and prep work. And I, because I was in college, like, they're not letting college kids in the kitchen. So I worked on the front end, hosting and waitressing and that type of stuff. But the thing about when you work at a couple of different businesses, you also get to see different management styles, different bosses, and kind of what you don't want to do as a business owner. And then you see what you do want to do. You get to see both ends of that. So my mom kind of was seeing the same thing. I graduated from LSU and I was going into law school. And I said, okay, look, I need a break because I went directly from high school into college. I finished college in four years. I was like, I might, I did all my summer courses. I did an intercession. I was like, I'm getting this done. And I said, I've got to have a break because I am like burnt out on school, need a minute. So my mom said, well, I think I'm going to, I'm going to open a restaurant because I'm really kind of tired of working for other people. And I said, oh, okay. Well, let's, let's look around. We'll see. Like, if something opens up, then let's do it. If it opens up by the time I have to finish my application for law school, we'll go full, full on. Well, just so happened, a local guy down by the interstate, we originally started by the interstate where Petco is now. It was a big flea market with seventy thousand square feet. It was all a Petco Office Depot that staged, that whole center was one space. So we were in, there was a man in there and he was selling all of his equipment. He was getting out of the restaurant industry. He was tired of it. So he listed it and my mom saw it. It was like, oh, well, I mean, that's kind of a good price for that, that equipment. Let's go look. We went and looked and she said, I really think we should, I think we should do this. And I said, okay, mom, let's, let's do it.
From humble beginnings in nineteen eighty-nine, Big Mike's has long been a place for friends and family to gather for lunch, dinner, and drinks. Big Mike, Jocelyn, and their friendly staff invite you to come in and relax in one of their spacious dining areas, or watch a game on one of the big screen TVs. Big Mike's is a place to meet old friends or make new ones. Big Mike's offers daily and nightly specials, and they specialize in serving up delicious and fresh menu items. Big Mike's offers a catering menu for large groups and has private party rooms for up to one hundred guests. Whether you're planning a quick lunch or a large family dinner, or just a night out with friends, Big Mike welcomes you to experience a great time. And don't forget to grab some t-shirts, caps, or koozies in the gift shop. Oh, or a bottle of Big Mike's honey Dijon. It's delicious. Big Mike's Sports Bar and Grill. We're kind of a big deal.
And so we hopped in and at the time I was working at a law firm. So I went in because I was a runner for them. I went in and said, hey, guys, I think my mom's going to buy a restaurant. And they were like, what, how, how do you think? And I said, ah, I mean, she's going to talk to the guy right now and talk about money and see how, how much he wants and stuff. And it just kind of worked, it all worked out. It was strange. So we were just like, all right, this is meant to be. Let's go with it. And also, it helped that I was twenty-one and young and very, very optimistic and fresh and ready to go, ready to go. You know, I mean, my bills were, I think my bills at the time were four hundred dollars a month, like included rent, everything. My, my rent was two hundred and fifty a month. So it wasn't real hard to make those bills, you know? So I was like, oh, we can do it. It doesn't matter if we don't make a lot of money. We can, we'll make it. And we, we went with it. And I mean, I love it. And it just kind of all worked out. My husband at the time was working construction. He said, oh, well, no, I love cooking. Let's go. And we'll, we'll, we'll try all these new recipes. We'll try some of my grandma's old recipes. And so we got into it and it, being in a market, it was like being in a mall, kind of gives you a captive audience. People are there shopping. They're going to be there all day. They want to eat. So it really allowed us to test stuff and gave us room to grow because we did have a captive audience. Like, they were going to come in and get a burger. Yeah, they were, they, we knew they would do that. They'd get a couple of soup. Maybe they'd get some chips. At the time, it was real closer to concession stand type stuff, quick, real quick serve. And it gave us that opportunity to, to really fill it out and give us some growth years. Whereas if we'd have gone standalone restaurant, I just don't, I don't see us, I don't feel like we'd have made the jump if it was standalone.
Right.
Because we don't, because I mean, we were really, we were naive and we were new business owners, but we did really go through and make sure to check everything and make sure to do the backend work, like what the licensing was going to cost, how much this rent, how much we had to sell to make the rent. All those, like we, I say we jumped in, but we did do a good deal of homework.
Yeah, you knew your break given.
Yeah, yeah, we did. So we, we did that. And I think if it was standalone, we'd have probably passed. But it was one of those things in life that just kind of fell together perfectly and rolled with it. And it, and I said, you know, look, we'll, we'll give it five years. If we're doing good in five years, we're making it in five years. We'll stay with it. And so we did. And it kept going. So we, you know, I mean, I love it.
Yeah. And it's, it's, you probably picked the best time in your life to make that decision because at twenty-one, if it don't work out, it don't work out. You're still young. Yeah. You know, when you're, when you're forty-five, a lot of people have families and they have, you know, mortgages. And if it don't work out, it could literally ruin your life. Yeah.
And I mean, some people can come back, but a lot of people, it's, you know, to be able to walk away, that's where it's at. You know, I mean, it's, if, can you just walk away from it, stop and leave? And at twenty-one, that's way easier.
Yes. Agreed. A hundred percent. And I always tell young, young people, I say, you know, take your chances when you're young. If you've got something on your mind and you think it's a good idea, do it before you're, you know, forty and you've got all this responsibility.
Exactly.
View in your bio, it stood out to me that you described your, your, your words, you described them as army brats. So I think this is a key point. Having come from a military background, being, you know, being surrounded by a former military my entire life, I know exactly what you mean when you discuss core values. You were raised with such as family, God, hard work, and community service were the four that you mentioned. How beneficial have those values been in running Tola Cafe from a work ethic standpoint?
Um, I think it, it, when you just have that in the back of your mind, it's just something, when I say core values, it's just like breathing to me. You know, it's, it's just built in. You don't have to think about it. It's there. And when your parents have built that into you, staying an extra hour to do something is nothing. Like, you just expect it to happen. Why wouldn't you do it? You know, you don't question it. It's, oh, we have an extra hour of work. You do, just do it. It has to be done. And, you know, it's, it's the same thing with community service. It's, oh, you see something that needs to be picked up or fixed, you just do it because you should, because you're part of the community. You're part of that system. And I think both my parents being raised in the army and being army brats and moving around, but still finding that, that community, because they both were raised on army bases, you still have to find that community and you make it, you make the community. And that's, I think with a restaurant, it's the same kind of thing. You make your regulars, you make your community, and you just become part of it. And you become part of their, you find a way to be part of their lives. And they in turn find a way to be part of yours. So it's, that's what I mean by core values. It just, it, it's so ingrained in you that you just really don't think about it. So I know for me, when people ask about it, I'm like, I have to stop and think about it instead of, you know, it's, it's really just a part of you. So, and in restaurants, that's so needed because you have, the people in restaurants just become so tight because you go through so much in the restaurant industry. You're there, they're the ones, part of your team. They're catching your slack. They're making, they're helping making you, you know, if something bad happens, they're going to make the excuse for you. They're going to have your back. They're going to fix it. So you've got to have that family, kind of that family group, that family core going the whole time. And it's important in business, you know, to have that.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. And it's, it's probably the, the most valuable asset when it comes to business ownership, to me, is work ethic. You're going to work. You're building something. If you're someone that wants, you know, wants kind of like an eight to five type thing, don't open a business because it's not eight to five. How nice would that be?
I know. I think about it sometimes. It's like a jury.
Yeah. I live vicariously through people on Facebook.
It's a mirage. You look at it, they're on vacation. You're like, wait, is that a, is a place?
Yeah.
Not just a picture?
That's right. Yeah, that looks like fun. Maybe, maybe one day. But, but it's like, like you say, it's like breathing. We're just kind of used to those sorts of things and, and probably will be way out of place without, you know, having something to do every second of every day. Now, another thing you mentioned was in college, you discovered author Anne Rand, who is known for two books, actually, Fountainhead and Atlas Shrugged. Tell us a little bit about her influence on you that you learned through reading her books.
With her, she, you know, Atlas Shrugged for me was the big one. And it, and it, she's an entrepreneur. They run the, the railroad throughout the country, the railroad line. And it, and it talks about how, well, first, her being a woman entrepreneur and a, just largely, there's actually, in the story, there's no other women, like, there's no other women business owners in, in the story. And it just shows the challenges that she has with that. But one of the things that caught me was that was not a hindrance to her. That was, she was okay with that. She knew it was part of the system. And she said, okay, um, this is part of the system I'm in and I will work through it. I'm going to work around it. If this is what they expect, that's fine. I will, I will overcome that. I will work above it and I will keep going down to where, and I feel like especially in kind of today's society, with the, with the federal government and how everything's going, regulations on businesses and Atlas Shrugged was so huge, the regulations of businesses, the government kept putting and choking the businesses out. They just kept saying, okay, I'm going to work around. I'm going to get other business owners. We will talk one-on-one. We will get, we'll make deals. We will get all this together and we will make our businesses thrive. And it just showed how she kept working within the system, but she was, she was going to overcome and beat the system going through it.
Yeah.
Instead of it being a, and I, and I kind of think that with my mom, I learned that with her also. It was, okay, it doesn't matter if somebody thinks you can't do it, do it. Do it. You don't have to talk about it. You just get out there and do it. And then they'll know. They're going to see that you did it. So why waste your time trying to change their perspective through speaking to them? Because they just haven't had that experience. So you need to, they, they have, they haven't had that experience. You can't expect them to know it. Just show them. And then when it's in the front of their face, they can't help but admit that, you know, to themselves at least, because you may not ever get them admitting to you, but to themselves, they'll see that it's a possibility.
Yeah.
And in that book, she just constantly, you know, it, it took her, her whole life to come out on top, but she did. And it was, it's a good, it's a, it's a good book to read. And some of it's reading between the lines in those type of books because when that was written, you definitely couldn't come out against the establishment. That was not something that was okay, or that you could write a book and not be persecuted for, literally.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that was a different time, back in the early, you know, nineteen hundreds. And, and I'll tell you, one thing I, I've learned through business, I'm sure you have too, is the only limits we really have are the ones we put on ourselves. When you allow other people to limit you, that's when you run into problems. And, and so a lot of good lessons in that book. So definitely recommend somebody check that out. I'll even link it in the description of this video. So. BJ Pawn and Gun in Denham Springs wants to buy your em when it gold jewelry, gold coins, and gold bullion. With thirty years of experience operating in the Livingston Parish area, BJ Pawn wants to be your source when selling your gold. So stop by BJ Pawn today for a no obligation offer. BJ Pawn, a proud sponsor of Local Leaders the Podcast. Maybe we'll inspire some other female business owners that are, are young and all that good stuff. So how important is it, in your opinion, to support, you know, private family-owned businesses in your community?
I think it's essential. I mean, I really believe that it is not just one of those, like, oh, you should do it. No, it's essential for your community. If you want to have a strong, just city, you want to have strong schools, you want to have strong after-school programs, recreational programs, you need to support small businesses, little league teams, or your church projects, because they don't want to, they just don't want to go out and pick and shoot. They can't do one without doing everyone.
That's right. Every, every church league would want, want them to do that.
But the difference with small business owners, your small business owners go to your church. So to them, it's not a question, or they went to that school. So they want to support it. And even if they can't support all of them, maybe they'll support a couple extras if they can. And that's something that you don't have to worry about. That's, they, as being part of the community, small business owners just do that. You know, I mean, they, and we have great examples of that in our community. And I just think if people took a moment to really look at it, and I understand you might pay a little bit more, but the truth of that, it's not because we're wanting to charge you more. It's just, we don't get the same deals that these large stores get. You know, we can't buy it by the million cases. It's one, it's one case.
You're buying it by the truckload. They're buying it by the warehouse.
Exactly, exactly.
So your cost is different.
It's so much higher. But it doesn't matter because in the end, it all goes back to, to this community because we live here. Our, you know, kids go to school here. You're going to buy your house here. All of that money stays here. Whereas if you go to a big ba, a big box store, I mean, I think it's like ten percent of the money stays here. It's something so tiny. And you got to realize that that's what grows your community is your local dollars staying locally.
Yeah, that's right. And, and you know, with local businesses and it's family-owned businesses, even, even to more of an extent, you know, you, when I walk in Tola Cafe, I know the people there, right? I mean, we talk when I go in there. When I go in some of these other local business, family owned businesses, I know the people there. Maybe I go to church with them. Maybe they go to school with my son, whatever, and daughters. But aside from all of that, it's a relationship I build, you know, with someone instead of a corporation. And I'm not against corporations. I mean, they do employ a lot of people and they bring tax dollars to your city. And, but here's the difference in my mind. You know, when there's a pandemic, hypothetically, you know, your public companies that have millions of shares of stock, they're going to be okay. Their stockholders are not going to start selling their stock, in all likelihood, at some of these bigger places. The business owner, that's the family business owner, they could literally go out of business during a pandemic. And many did.
Exactly.
Yeah. And so that's why, you know, we implore people to be cognizant of your family-owned businesses in your area.
Well, I'll tell you, this is an example that I use when people talk to me whenever I'm talking as a city councilwoman. When you look from the flood, because a big issue for me on the campaign side is, and as a council member, is the old Albertson's building. And anyone locally knows where that's at. They, after the flood, they were open, they were one of the, I mean, ninety-two percent of our buildings flooded in Denham Springs. So they were part of that eight percent. And they were open. They did very well after the flood. They had a lot, I mean, unbelievable support. They were the only grocery store that didn't flood inside city limits. I mean, we, they were highly supported. They were open for five or six months after the flood closed. That was, you know, two thousand and sixteen. They, they've held that lease to that building till April of this year of two thousand and twenty-one, they had that lease. So that building has had a lease on it and rent has been paid for five years. And they closed. Whereas we have Quarters, who is our local grocery store, who stayed open, struggled through, struggled through losing business, not having the same amount of people here shopping. They kept their employees. And now what are they doing? Moving and building a whole new shopping center and reinvesting all that back into our community, where there's going to be more people employed, a larger, you know, really nice, you know, grocery store. It's, it's going to be, they're going to have other little buildings, you know, other businesses there. So they'll have space for that. That's the, the difference to me. You may have to wait a few more years, but this is a family that has been part of our community and had grocery stores for like fifty years.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and keep, keep building in. And instead of going, oh, we have money to build a, a new facility, we could just go to Baton Rouge or we'll go somewhere else. No, they just found a space up the road and bam, that's what they're doing. So, I mean, instead of, you know, like this big box store that came in, we supported, and not that we had a choice. And it was, you have, like we said, you're going to shop. I shop at Walmart. It happens, you know, you got to go. But to me, it's like, hey, if you, if there's a time where you're questioning, if you should, do it. Go spend the extra ten dollars or take the minute to get a different brand, maybe, and, and go to that small business owner. You know, because that's, they're going to keep putting money back in our community.
Yeah. And at least check in with them. Maybe they won't have what you're looking for. They won't have the stock in stock, but at least check in with them and give them a shot at it.
And maybe you have to, instead of going to Walmart and get every single thing there, maybe you have to go to Quarters and get your groceries and then go to Petco and get pet stuff. You know, maybe you have to take an extra twenty minutes. It, I mean, I know we're all short on time, but the, that amount of time and that extra money to these businesses is truly, you're keeping a job here. You're keeping a business here, keeping a family here.
I agree a hundred percent. Love that. And, and you, you know, you hit the nail on the head. So let's talk a little bit more about Tola. So in two thousand and three, you opened Tola Cafe. And then at some point, you ended up in the antique district. Tell me how that happened.
Well, for us, you know, two thousand and six, we had Katrina. Hurricane Katrina hit Louisiana and it was devastating. But Denham Springs itself was not hit as, as bad or even as, as close as bad. I mean, we didn't have water. We had some wind damage, but it left all these businesses in New Orleans and that area, St. Bernard Parish, moving this way. And, and their families moving this way because they had nothing to go back. It was like us in the flood in two thousand and sixteen. Some of them could go back and some just really could not. So two thousand and six rolls around, we make it through Katrina. We're going back to work. We go into work and we find out that a, a business group from New Orleans has bought our building and they are not renewing our lease. They're choosing to not, to not honor that lease, which that is their choice because there were new business coming in. And they bought the building. So it was, hey, you have the weekend to get out, pack up. And there were, I mean, like a hundred and twenty vendors in there. So we went in on a Thursday and it was, hey, guys, can y'all get out? Just, you got to go. And we were all like, what do you mean? I mean, my answer was, like I said, I mean, yeah, I was like twenty-three. I was like, oh, rent's paid. What do you mean? Like, they paid rent? We paid it. And they're like, no.
Can't just do that.
Yeah, you can't do that, right? And so we were very lucky and it goes back to community for us there also because we had someone come in and eat lunch and he had been a regular of ours throughout the, at that point, only, you know, three years, had been a regular. And he said, April, what is everybody talking about? Y'all moving? Y'all closing? And I said, yeah, Robert, we, you know, this building got bought out. We don't have any go. And he said, well, you're going to open up somewhere else? I said, I don't, I don't know. I found out today. Like, I'm looking, like, I mean, I said, I've got calls out, but I've called some people. I don't know. And he said, well, you know, we have that building downtown and the restaurant that we had in there is moving out. You want to come look at it? And I said, yes, yes, I sure do. So we drove down after work that day and looked at it. And they still had a lot of their stuff in there. And I said, do you, am I supposed to clean this too? And he said, oh, no. He said, they're, they're cleaning it. Because I was like, I will clean it tonight. And well, we can do this. And so he said, no, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're moving out. They'll have everything out. Do you want to take it? And I said, yes, please. You know, and so we backed to community. It was just, he had heard about everything closing out and had an empty space and thought, hey, let me go see if they want it, you know? And he hadn't even listed it yet. So came down and it took us a month, which was, I mean, amazing, moved everything out of the original business over the weekend to my parents' house. So I'm sure their neighbors loved that because the backyard, it was like chairs and tables and shelves. chairs and tables and shelves and just piled up. It was horrible. Um, and then it was, you know, get to the new space, paint it, get it done and, and get all the permits done and new license and transfer it. And we were there and going in a month.
Fantastic.
And we've been there, every, you know, it'll be fifteen years in May. So.
Jim, we're swamped with these podcasts and I'm in the mood for some local barbecue for lunch.
Barbecue? Casey, the problem with barbecue is the speed. That would take forever.
Not at Buddy's barbecue. With the drive-through line, they can get us fed fast in that sauce. Mmm, yum.
It is right in the heart of Denim Springs. Do they have specials?
Yes, they have plate lunch specials every day, Jim. And I bet you didn't know, they offer some of the best catfish plates you've ever tasted on Fridays. And on Saturdays, they have smoked ribeyes. They are as flavorful as you can find anywhere.
Okay, I'm hungry. What's the number? I'll call it in.
No, just go online and place your order. By the time you're finished, I can head that way.
That is convenient and really smart.
Yep, just like me.
A local business and you know what I always say.
Oh yes. Jim Chapman loves local.
Correct. And that makes me smart.
Oh please. If you're in the mood for barbecue, go see Buddy's barbecue at one oh five Florida Avenue Southeast. Right in the heart of Denim Springs. They're a proud sponsor of Local Leaders, the podcast.
Fifteen years and you're really in the perfect spot. It, uh, it, it just kind of fits your food, if that makes any sense, at least to me. You know, you're, you're right there in the center of town too, which, which doesn't hurt. Get, get a little bit of traffic in that district. Thankfully it's, it's improved since COVID hit. Now let's talk about COVID for a minute. I want to just discuss, uh, just a little bit about it. The restaurant industry obviously took, that in the hairstylist industry took the largest hit, in my opinion. Take me kind of through that process of your thoughts when March came around of twenty twenty.
I'll tell you, I did a, an interview with David Gray when it first started and I told him I thought that if, if the government did not issue out some kind of help or if regulations did not lift, cause this was, must've been like the third or fourth week. Cause it was when they had completely shut down indoor dining. It was, restaurants had to completely close out. I told him, I said, look, I've got two months. Cause I told him, I said, David, I've been through this before. I've packed up and moved before. I know, um, you know, I have a lot more time under my belt. I know how much money I have. And honestly, if, uh, if I hadn't have gone through moving with Katrina and then the flood, maybe I wouldn't have known that. But I said, look, I think I've got two months. And if I don't get something, I don't get some kind of help, if they don't start issuing out unemployment, anything, uh, this is not gonna work. And I told him, I said, look, if they want to completely shut everything down, I will, I have, I support it. Let's do it. Let's shut it all down. And to me, I meant everything. And let's get this knocked out and then go back. Because I told him, I said, I think the most dangerous will be us dragging this out. And that will make small businesses choke out because it will give, it, it's just too much. It's too much. After the flood, I said, I know, um, what money I don't have, how much money I do have. Cause I know what I spent coming back in, trying to get back, um, and getting back. And, uh, I said, so I, I, that's it for me. And he said, oh, you think so? You think two months? And I said, absolutely. Well, luckily the government did get on the ball and they started issuing unemployment, uh, which, cause I told him, I said, look, I work for myself. There's, you know, I know I've got to pay my bills at home. I have to pay my bills here. So they started issuing unemployment. I said, okay, I can file for unemployment. That'll take care of my house. Luckily the landlord that I have, uh, very blessed. He, he said, look, I can give you all a couple of months free. Cause you can't open. So I'm not even gonna go through trying to charge it. Like I'm, I'm not doing it. Um, and then after that, I'll just let you fall behind. As, as long as you can pay something. And so I said, okay, we can do that then. And I told him, I said, I'll, I'll be right up, you know, I'll be upfront with you. If it gets to the point that we can't, I will make that decision to cut and we will have to work for other people and we'll have to, you know, we'll do it. But, um, it was definitely such a gut punch to me because it was, as a small business owner, even with like the flood and stuff, you still had, I mean, just the tiniest bit of control. And you knew exactly like, okay, the waters go out, you go clean. It's like, it's still moving. It's moving. With COVID, it was just complete stop and now go sit. And that does not float well with me. Almost like sit and do what? Nothing?
And honestly, it's your baby.
Yeah. And it is.
You build that.
Yeah. And we were like, oh my gosh. Like we left on that Friday and I, I said, oh my gosh, like this is it. This is it. I mean, it was just insane because I had gone, um, and, and picked up lunch at Peabody's. And while I was there, they issued the, um, like closing out indoor dining. And I said, oh my gosh, I thought we would at least have the weekend to go through. And, uh, I was like, I thought it would at least start on Monday because that week we had had three changes in rules throughout the week. It was three complete changes. And so I was like, what are they, can we even get one completely done? Like what are they doing? And, um, and that was on the state level and it was, uh, just devastating watching it. And, uh, you know, I was talking to Chris at Whistlestop and me and her were back and forth. And we're just like, well, what, what can we do? And, um, at first it was like, oh, well, we can do some catering downtown. And then they came through and shut down all the offices. I'm like, well.
There goes that.
Can't do that. And, uh, you know, it was like, well, we, maybe we can do the, like, we just kept going back and forth, trying to hustle stuff and, and trying to figure out new ways. And finally I said, Chris, I'm done. I'm done. I said, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm tapping out for a little bit. And that's, I, I, that's what we had to do for a little while. Cause it was just so overregulated. And I told her, I said, I can go buy all this other stuff, but if they keep choking it out, I'm gonna put out so much money. I'm gonna like do damage to my business going out and putting, getting all these, cause it, you know, new plastic, new takeout supplies, all this stuff. I said, if I revamped to this point, I'm not gonna be a restaurant anymore. I need to just switch over and be a caterer.
Very good.
You know, it's just, it, it started, you know, you start looking at it on, this is the, you know, I'm in this business. So is this business gonna work? Or do I need to scrap this whole model? And go to something new. And for me, I was like, I'm, I'm not doing that. Yeah. I, I own a restaurant. And that's what, that's my dream. And that's what I want to do. So I said, you know, if it's not a restaurant anymore, I'm gonna totally pivot and do something else.
You're going to law school.
I was like, I'm about to go take that student loan out. It's gonna happen. They're all paid off. Let's go again. But, uh, you know, I said, it's, that's really where it was gonna go. And I, uh, it, luckily enough stuff came out and we qualified for the PPP, uh, loans and that stuff. So it was just enough to keep us going. And I told him, I said, I don't mind hard times and I don't mind it being just enough. I'm okay with that. As long as I can see the light, I can see us moving.
Great way to put it. And thank God for those lifelines at that time, especially your industry.
And you can't expect your kids, like to come back to work and stuff. I was like, you know, like, I mean, you got all these college kids working for me and they were like, what's unemployment? What's that? Cause I really, when we shut down, I said, okay, guys, like I had all their stuff printed out for them. I said, this is unemployment. This is what you're gonna do. I need you to file today. And they're like, yeah, but they're saying maybe. I said, no, no. No, uh, let's sit down. Like let's sit down. We will all file today. I need you to do it right now. And so, uh, because all of them are in college, they all live out on their own. And I was like, y'all, these bills are gonna keep coming. They're not gonna, like, I was like, these people that you rent from and like they have to pay for that building and let's do it right. You still have to pay them. And, um, you know, I was like, I know they, cause they were like, oh, they said they can't evict people. I was like, don't you do that. Don't you do that to those people. We only get unemployment and you're, that's not right. I was like, you're gonna pay them and, uh, on time. Cause you're gonna get unemployment. So, uh,
Good unemployment too. They were getting paid.
Oh yeah, they were fine. Uh, and, and I told him, I said, you know, look, we're like, I will report you when we open back up. Don't play. I was like, you're gonna get this unemployment and it's good, but, uh, we open back up. Guess who's coming back to work? So, and they were all good. All my kids, they're, all my employees are really good, but they, uh, you know.
And I'm glad you mentioned, yeah, definitely. And we're so glad you're on the, you know, it looks like all of us, uh, are on the other side of that. You know, the numbers are really drastically going down. Everything's looking a lot better. The people that want to get vaccinated are getting vaccinated and, and, uh, so let's hope all that continues. But you made it through and that's, that's strong.
Oh yeah. We, we made it and, uh, and truly the, the part of that is remaining, and then we've had opportunities through the years to, expand out and get other locations. And for us, it was just, no, we wanted our, we wanted our one, like really truly little hole in the wall restaurant. We love it. We love that part of the industry and, um, the freedom that you have with being able to kind of create your own stuff and not having, um, so like you get to a certain size, everything kind of needs you to function correctly and run a good business. It has to stay the same. When you're a smaller place, you can still do specials and kind of just, um, people come in, it's okay if they have, you can really do off the menu stuff for people that maybe have dietary changes and, uh, regular customers and stuff like that. But being as long, open as long as we have, we had our regulars that called and said, hey, we will get stuff to go. We will do this, you know, um, we're gonna, even if we can't come in, we will eat every day. And, and they did. And that's what kept us keeping that electric bill paid and keeping that water bill paid.
I know you were doing some things at the beginning as far as like call and we'll bring it out to your car.
That's it. It was everything. I was like, whatever you need to do, like we will walk it out to you. I don't care if it's pouring down. And a couple of times it was pouring down rain. I was like, I don't care. We will get it done because, and it was, you know, bring it to people's offices, whatever you could do.
Casey, have you called the plumber about the sink in the break room?
Yep. They came this morning. I can't believe you missed them.
What was their name again?
Guyot's Plumbing.
Wow, that was quick. And they did a great job.
They did. And when you need plumbing services of any type, give Guyot's Plumbing a call. With over fifty years combined plumbing experience, the team at Guyot's Plumbing can handle all of your plumbing needs. So whether it's residential, commercial, new construction or reconstruction, give Guyot's Plumbing a call at nine zero seven six two eight two and get scheduled fast.
Guyot's Plumbing, a proud sponsor of Local Leaders, the podcast.
But the, the truth of that too is, is that level of work, you can only keep that level up for so long. So finally, when they started, I'll, I'll tell you, I was happy to not have to run stuff out and run, you know, run the phones and run the to-go orders. And that, cause I told him, I said, I am not twenty anymore. I mean, going home and you're looking at it going, wow, I'm doing a quarter of the sales, but why do I feel like I did quadruple those sales? Cause my feet are killing me and my back is hurting and I want to roll over. So it was nice to get back to dining in and, and that regular rhythm that I'd had for fifteen years, sixteen years.
Absolutely. So glad you got that. And you, and you mentioned employees and how important a role do you think your staff is to the success of Tola Cafe?
Well, I mean, in restaurants, your staff, it's, it's essential because that's your first point of contact with your customers. For me, I, I used to stay upfront a lot more. Now I'm more on the kitchen end and I run back and forth like a crazy person. But, um, mine, it's, it's very, they're essential for my business to succeed. It's for them to understand that customers, um, you know, like that relationship has to be nurtured. It has to be, you know, you have to be on top of it. If, I mean, you have plenty of customers, they'll come in, maybe they don't remember that they're allergic to mayo. Like they said at one time, they think that should be it. You know, and it's, but truthfully, I'm like, hey guys, that's, that's it. That's what we get. So, you know, you need to remember for them and keep going. And maybe they want something different or they don't like tomatoes or whatever, you know, but that's what makes a small business special is that we do remember that. And so when they come in, you know, they'll, they'll notice, oh, I didn't say it or, oh, but it's, it was done correctly. And, um, that's what keeps it going. So employees, it's just, you can't, as a small business owner, you truly can't do everything. As much as you wanna, you can't. So you have to delegate and you have to make sure that they, your employees know what you want and what you expect. And then you've got to make sure they do it. And if not, you know, you gotta go.
Yeah. And, and that's, that, that's right. And you know, the, the thing is, Amber, the customer, it may be the first time they've ever been in an establishment. And, uh, if they get bad service or, or even what, you know, we all know that sometimes people can perceive something differently. Then, and, and, but even in that situation, you never, you may not get a second chance. And so, um, as the business owner, you're kind of, you're kind of saying, all right, here's my baby. Don't mess it up.
Please don't drop it.
And make it, yeah. And make everybody feel special and, and, uh, and usually the business will take care of itself. I can tell you, I've been in the, in your place a million times and, and, uh, never had a problem. Loving people.
I mean, we really, we, we try to stay on top of it and, uh, I, I feel like we do a great job of it and, keeping the employees going and making sure really that they know what you expect and what you want. And then, and following through with it. But I'll tell you for, um, the hospitality and service industry, the worst thing is the mask for us, like to get our point through, because you are literally screaming at customers. You are screaming at them and it does not always come across correctly because you're screaming at them and they know you're screaming. So sometimes, you know, like you said, sometimes the perception is, you know, why are you screaming at me? It's like, cause you, I've said it three times. You didn't hear me the first three.
Yeah. And I find it very difficult to talk through a mask for some, you know, I would make a horrible doctor, I guess. I just cannot stand, I feel like I'm not communicating or the person can't see my lips move. Not that that matters.
I read lips a lot and I did not realize I did that until the mask came, until everybody had to wear a mask. And I, I will tell people, I'm like, I need you to talk a lot louder. I mean, I'm like, I'm wearing white noise a lot in the kitchen. So it takes a minute for my hearing to adjust. Like I need you to do it. And, um, it throws people off, but I'm like, God, I need to see your lips. I forgot to see them. Cause I feel so, I just feel like I'm not communicating correctly or that I can't, like you said, like I just can't understand sometimes what people are saying or it muffles so much.
Yeah. And you can't read emotion either. When, when somebody's talking, they could be happier. They could be mad and you can't differentiate because they got a mask on. Pull your mask down. Let me see. Yeah. So, uh, it's also worth mentioning that you're a member of several organizations here. The Louisiana Restaurant Association, y'all are a member of, the Denim Springs Merchant Association, the Louis, uh, the Livingston Parish Chamber of Commerce. In addition to that, you also serve on the Denim Springs City Council, as we kind of discussed earlier. Now, what was your goal when you ran for that seat? Tiffany C Card with Home Key Mortgage combines the experience and knowledge you need to make your mortgage loan a smooth, stress-free process. Reach out to Tiffany for more information on the vast mortgage programs available in the Livingston Parish area. Tiffany C Card of Home Key Mortgage, a proud sponsor of Local Leaders, the podcast.
Well, we had, so the two thousand and sixteen, the flood came through and Chris Davis, uh, he was a council member. He left and moved to Mississippi because he flooded, um, had different business opportunities. So his seat was open. There was a year left on his term. So I thought, well, it's a year and let me run and we'll see, um, all this rebuilding in the city. And my business was coming back and I'm right across from where City Hall, at the time it was a temporary location, but now we've bought that building and there's, it's a permanent location. For City Hall, but it's really, it's like across the street pretty much from me. So I was watching it and I just really, um, after the flood, kind of got a little bit more involved on the, I guess, regulation end of things. Cause dealing with FEMA and all that. I was like, what do you mean? Why is it this way? So then it was more research into why things fell out the way, uh, they were and, um, what regulations, what they stemmed from. So I started going to the little community meetings that the city was having, uh, for the rebuilding process. And they did them strong meetings and kind of get involved there. And then I was like, oh, well, these are suggestions, but how do I, how would I actually change it if I wanted to do it? How do I do that? And so then they were like, well, you'd have to tell a council member and then I was like, oh, okay. Well, I could do that, but I really feel like I'm about to be really telling somebody a lot of stuff. Like I thought I'm gonna be a good friend with some council members. So then when Chris Davis left, I, I thought, well, um, I mean, always like I said, I originally was gonna go into law school, which probably would've led to politics anyway, but I thought, well, maybe I'll see, I'll run and see. It's a year. And if I go in being new and never have even talked about running for office, I, we knew it would be a trial run. I didn't think I would win the first time, uh, for that one. And I didn't. And that was kind of expected, but I thought, let me see if I can even kind of see myself doing this. So got out there, ran for that first one, for that last end of term of, uh, Chris Davis's Laura Smith won that term. Then everybody ran the next year. So, uh, yeah, it was a full, you know, a full ba-, uh, ballot. So I said, okay, well, didn't make it. This is it. I know what, how to do it now. Kind of had my little trial run. The good thing about that was that year, it was a year to the next election. So you never finished campaigning. It was just keep going. Ran and made it, but it was really because of the flood. I don't think, I'm, I mean, really for me, I'm, I don't think I'd have ran if the flood wouldn't have happened. Because it was just, I'd have kept going in my, in my lane. It would've been nothing. There'd been no bump there for me to even consider it. Consider it. It would've been, oh, keep going. When the flood happened, it was just a pivot point for me, um, looking at everything. And like I said, I wanted, I saw, I was like, okay, all this FEMA money, money is coming to town and all this rebuilding is coming and there's gonna be all these new things happening. Um, I just really wanted to be part of that and, and to be able to give not my, just because people kept coming to me and they're like, Amber, have you heard this? Have you heard of this happening? Have you, do you, how do we fix this? And I was like, people keep asking me this, but I really can't do any. And I was like, people keep asking me this, but I really can't do anything for them. Like, I was like, I can't.
Yeah.
I I can't really help them, but, you know, and I I just kept feeling that kind of pull of uh wanting to be able to help people and serve people and I felt it kind of, kind of pulling on me. And I thought, why not? Let's just give it a try and if it works, it works. So uh, I did and like I said, I think it just goes back to those core values of of community service and feeling, I just felt that need. And uh, with the flood, it it just kind of accelerated it. So there I ran and I won and I mean, it's been two years now, so it's it's going good.
Fantastic. Yeah, and we sure, you know, people don't realize that that uh, what you just said is what you want to hear out of the, I hate to use the term politicians, but.
I mean, it's true.
But what you want to hear is those type of reasons for running. I I used to have people ask me, especially when I started this podcast, when are you gonna run for this and that? And I'm like, you know, honestly, when I feel like I can make a difference.
Right.
Um, if I felt like I had an idea that would benefit the community, I might, would consider that. But uh, you know, too often you see politicians and they run for the power aspect and and not the giving back.
Right.
Aspect of it. And I think that's an admirable thing because look, it takes time, right?
Oh, yeah.
You're giving up time from family and friends and in your restaurant and uh, and so it takes a commitment. And uh, so you, hopefully, i- if you're doing that sort of thing, you have your your uh head on straight when it comes to why you're doing it.
Well, and I think, uh, I am, I'm part of the Denham Springs Main Street Association also. And uh, with that association, Renee Delahoussaye, who was a former council member, he retired uh the year that I ran. So actually, we ended up getting his seat, I did. Uh, he was such a strong and is such a strong supporter supporter of downtown Denham. So I knew that he was gonna be retiring and I was like, oh, my gosh, we're gonna lose that support. And not that the other council members don't support us, but he came to all kind of meetings and he was really, um, it was kind of his, his thing and any kind of like grants, Renee always knew about them. He was always like, hey, out there, I mean, before anybody else knew, because that just was his thing and he was really good about it. But um, I saw him going out too and I was like, man, this is uh, because I told him, I said, I would have never ran against him. Like, he was just kind of my, like, that was the one I went to. I was a council member, I went to, he was my guy and I said, you know, I don't see me running against him uh because he did it. He did the job that I needed. When he retired, I was like, man, we're fixing to have like a vacuum, we're not gonna have that support or that representation. So um, that was a chunk of it, too. And and it worked out good, but uh, yeah, you definitely learn when you run for all, it's, it's amazing that it's given me, you know, when you're a business owner and you're kind of in the same business for so long, it's almost been twenty years with the restaurant, um, it's just second nature. I mean, I learned little new, like, new things, little, but this with the council, it is like, it's amazing. It's like going back to school.
Yeah.
It is new things every day, new regulations, new ways to do stuff, new reasons why. So it's, it's been really for me mentally, it's been very challenging and and very stimulating, so I like it.
Awesome, awesome. Well, good for you, you're doing a great job with that. And you're, you know, where you come from and in that your business is in the antique district. What a great representative to have in a, in the city council.
Oh, yeah.
So, great job there. Now, you said something in your bio, it really stood out to me and I want to quote it kind of verbatim. So when asked, what awards or recognition have you received related to your business? You answered, the cafe Chef Carey and I uh have received different accolades over the years. But the day-to-day recognition from our guests is what we treasure the most. And I think that's fantastic. Um, you know, that really is the only feedback you need is those who who patronize your restaurant.
Absolutely.
And uh, and so that just stood out to me. That was a great, uh, that's a great way to to judge your business.
Right. Well, for us, it's, I mean, really, it's the people coming in and um, seeing their kids or their grandkids. And literally, I've got ones that, you know, like, they came in, they were pregnant and now their kids are graduating high school or have graduated or getting married and um, you know, they'll, they'll call and get stuff for different occasions and you feel like you're just really, you're part of it. And they, to the, like, they expected it's part of their life to have whatever that dressing is for Christmas or that soup for whatever um Sunday meal. And it just uh, it it really, it's amazing how much customers truly become family.
Yeah.
And uh, how much it is like just gut-wrenching when you lose one.
Yeah.
And I guess especially uh with my customer base being a little bit older, uh, and with COVID, it was so scary because I was like, really, this is like, somebody asked me, they said, well, why don't you just open? I said, because really, y'all, if one of my customers, if I even in the very back of my mind thought that we caused a customer to fall ill or the COVID die, I don't like, I just don't know what I'd do.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's um, you know, I mean, as part, you've truly become part of their lives and they become part of yours.
You do.
You know, and so it's, it really does, it means a lot more to us when we have our regulars that are like, you know, they love it and that's their part of their, their life. So it it means a lot more and not that I don't appreciate, you know, like, Country Roads doing, it's a um, you know, like New Chef Award and um, two two five, being on, running for stuff like that, that's great. But um, you know, like, stuff that really touches my heart is is the the customers.
Well put, very well put. And and um, and you're exactly right. It's funny, in my household, uh, you even come in that conversation because I'll come home with only one Tola salad and my wife wants to, yeah, she's like, uh, you went to Tola today? Or I'll tag on a post, you know, at Tola Cafe and she's like, get me a salad. So uh, yeah, I mean, those are, you know, that's kind of the difference with with uh family-owned places versus kind of, you know, run-of-the-mill corporations is, is uh, everybody in your family knows the place, they're familiar with it. Um, where, the way I discovered you to show you how much uh Facebook works is many years ago, you hit, y'all, I think it was a pecan pie or something y'all made.
Probably.
Oh, it was so good. I went one time and then I got like hooked on it and I was going all the time just for that dessert. And you know, uh, God, it was good. I wish you could think of the name of it now, but.
I think you got bread pudding.
Yes, that's what it was. Yes, bread pudding.
I'm thinking, that's what you got.
It was so good.
Sweet potato bread pudding with cauling sauce, that's the pecan you're making about.
That's right, you had me at hello. Let me tell you, if you have not had that, trust me, oh, yeah, when it's warm, oh, my gosh.
We've been doing blueberry with um lemon glaze right now because it springs, the blueberries are really good.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and that's so good. And I really don't even like lemon stuff, but I love that lemon glaze um, because it's, I'm sure because there's so much sugar in it.
What's not to love about sugar?
Because I'm not a lemon ring person, but I love lemon glaze.
Yeah, so what's your most popular menu item?
Um, really, the shrimp and corn soup and the roast beef po'boy probably run hand to hand.
Your shrimp po'boys are good, dude.
No, I love, I mean, for us, I mean, I really am there all, like, every day, everything, so everything on the menu, I eat it. But roast beef po'boy, I think people get that because nobody, like, I mean, it starts with a twenty-pound roast, it cooks overnight.
Oh, that sounds good.
You don't want, like, I mean, you're not, it's not making it because you smell it all night. Like, after the flood, we had to cook it at home and I was like, really? This is torture.
Yeah, that's.
This is torture.
Indeed.
I'm like, I cannot smell this all night long. Like, I mean, I would wake up at two in the morning and I was like, oh, I can smell the roast. Smell it. And so then it was uh, finally, we had enough, like, our prep kitchen and work was finally empty from all of our stuff being there. And it was like, okay, now we have our room to like cook the roast back here and it was, it was so nice.
Oh, that sounds so good.
Shrimp and corn soup, we've had the same shrimp and corn soup since we opened day one.
Very good.
And uh, we sell, it doesn't matter if it's a hundred degrees outside, we're gonna sell a pot of shrimp and corn soup. And I'm going, every time I'm going, y'all, it's a hundred degrees. Do you want a salad? You want a little bit lighter? Like, I mean, you could do like the soup and a half of po'boy, shrimp po'boy with it. And they're like, no, I want a bowl of soup. Bring me the whole bowl. I'm like, okay, go with it.
Yeah. Now is the time, more than ever, to support local business. Alisa Verrett Interiors and Custom Workroom is working hard to use made-in-the-U.S.A. products for all their clients' window coverings. Schedule your appointment today for a consultation on Roman shades, drapes, shutters, outdoor sun shades and even woven woods. Need a virtual appointment? No problem. Call Alisa at area code two two five nine five five one one three five. Alisa Verrett Interiors and Custom Workroom, a proud sponsor of Local Leaders, the podcast. So, awesome. Uh, now, one thing we do on this show that uh people seem to like is we do fun facts. So um, I I try to pick a subject that we're talking about that day. And then and today, we were talking about, you know, food and Louisiana food and, and uh, so I picked uh Louisiana cuisine as the subject. So we'll, we'll entice our audience with all these interesting facts. So here's one for you. Uh, onion, celery and bell pepper are actually considered the holy trinity of Cajun cuisine. The base of most dishes will have these three ingredients with bell pepper replacing carrot as the key ingredient. So I found that interesting, I actually knew that one. Uh, browbridge, the crawfish capital of the world and rain is considered the frog capital of the world.
Did not know about the frog.
Didn't know about the rain, knew about browbridge. Uh, the po'boy. So the po'boy originated from Martin Brothers French Market Restaurant and Coffee Stand in New Orleans during the nineteen twenty-nine streetcar strike. So they had a streetcar strike and these, and these two guys had a French market and they, all these people were outside and they basically said, why don't we make sandwiches for them with like fried shrimp on it? That's what they did and po'boy was because they were on strike and I guess all of them lost their job or whatever. Um, three most popular Cajun dishes in order, jambalaya, gumbo and boudin. Uh, the three most popular pies, now this one surprised me, nakedish meat pies, number one, no surprise there. Pecan pie, number two, uh crawfish pie, number three. I don't know where fillet gumbo comes in, but I bet it's.
It's right there, yeah.
How many uh pounds of crawfish are consumed in Louisiana season? Believe it or not, it's estimated. Yeah, how many would you guess?
I would, I mean, I don't know.
It's definitely millions.
Yeah, I was about to say, I would think million, I'm, ten million?
Ninety million.
Way more than I thought.
Pounds. Ninety million. Yeah.
It's amazing.
That's a lot.
Because ten, I was thinking it was out the box, like.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they say the average person, when you're ordering for like a crawfish boil, you you figure five pounds per person unless my wife's there and it's ten pounds because she, she, trust me, she, oh, man, it's going quick. Uh, so Amber Dugoss, staying on the subject of women, this is National Women's History Month. In honor of this, uh, we have something for you. So uh, in honor of this, Local Leaders of Podcast has chosen five of the top female leaders in the community who make a difference every day and you're one of them. Uh, it's our, our honor to present you with this plaque commemorating your lifetime of service to the restaurant industry and to the city of Denham Springs.
Thank y'all so much, y'all really.
Well, you deserve it and you have earned it and uh, it'll cost you one Tola salad.
Y'all, really, thank you so much.
You.
I really truly appreciate it.
We appreciate you and uh, love our female leaders around here. So Amber, tell everybody where you're located in Denham Springs uh, and uh shout out your Facebook.
Okay, so we are located in um the historic district, downtown Denham, the antique village.[1688.83]